Right, I think the bells have chimed and it's five o'clock precisely. So, welcome to the meeting of the Audit and Standards Committee and thank you for attending. If you've got any mobile phones or anything else that's likely to go off, please switch them off. And the meeting is a public meeting and it's been livestreamed. And apparently there is no fire alarm test today, so if it is an alarm then it's actually real. Moved towards introductions, I'm councillor Mohammed Marouf and I'm chair of today's meeting. And we'll go Alison.
Alison Howard, independent co-opted member.
Gareth Slater, councillor for Saudi.
James Grattley, independent co-opted member.
From Belbin, councillor for First Park and deputy chair of the committee.
Matt Dwyer, councillor for Burley Wood.
Simon Clement Jones, councillor for Beechworth Green Ward.
And the officer, David.
David Hollis, general counsel and monitoring officer.
Claire Taylor, chief operating officer.
Linda Hunter, senior finance manager in the audit and risk management.
Claire Shire, senior finance manager, accounting.
Philippa Bedak, democratic services.
Thank you so much for that. Apologies for absence have been received from councillor Diane Hurst and councillor Marouf Ralph. Exclusions of the public and press, I think there are no items today that require the exclusion of the press and the public. Next item on the agenda is if any member has got any declarations of interest, please speak now. Silence I take as though no one has, so thank you for that. Minutes of the previous meeting, I'll go through page by page, page nine. Just shout out if there are any issues. Page 10. Page 11. And finally, page 12. Any issues? Nope, thank you. Can we take that as being a true record, the last minute? The previous minutes? Hi, Eddie. If you just liked it, did you use it before?
Hello, this is Hayley Clark from Ernst &amp; Young, external audit.
Thank you and welcome. Next is public questions and petitions, as far as I'm aware, we haven't got any. No, thank you. We move straight on into item number seven, which is the role of the audit committee and training and the presenting officer is Claire Shire.
Hello, thank you Chair. So this paper updates a similar paper that I brought to the committee last year, but I thought it was important just to reiterate some of the points because we've got a lot of new members on the committee this time. And so I'm just going to discuss what guidance and training is available to support members on their role in the committee, especially the new members. So, we're working to the SIPF position statement which is attached to this report. And this outlines the expectations of how audit committees should function. And this statement has previously been endorsed the last two years, 22 and 23, since it came out as a model of best practice to follow. There is a detailed handbook which I will circulate for members which supports the position statement, goes into a lot more detail. And it also includes a self-assessment tool for the committee to evaluate its own performance, which you might find useful. Alongside the guidance pack, it's a requirement that members of the committee also have access to the appropriate training to support them in their role on the committee. So in this paper, I've suggested some areas where members might want to focus their training and then aim to do a plan and spread some of those dates throughout the year. So the first one really is a general introduction to the audit committee. And that's run by SIPF, it's a bookable course, the next date is in September. And I think that's really useful for new members of the committee, it's a good grounding in audit committees. And then one of the key functions of the committee is approving the statements of accounts. So always towards the end of the external audit process, we procure an independent trainer to come in and take you specifically through our accounts. And we'll do this again. We now know what the dates for the audit conclusions are going to be, so I'm proposing that we do one around November time for the 22-23 conclusion. And then possibly another one in January time because 23-24, the backstop deadline for that is February, the end of February. And I think that's coming to committee at the beginning of February, 6th of February. So, we've just been discussing with the trainer whether we could wrap that up in one session, he could cover both sets, because obviously both sets of accounts are available. Or whether you would prefer to do two separate sessions, one on each set of accounts. We also have some in-house training available. So last December, the Finance Service put on a briefing just about the wider context of local government finance works and how it's put together. And, you know, obviously detailed and specific to Sheffield. And this is something we invited all members to, so I can circulate the recording and the slides for that. And we will keep updating that annually as well, so that's something for all members really. And there is also some SIPF bookable courses on the same topic, but obviously that would be more general, general local government rather than specific to Sheffield. But there is a guidance handbook on local government finance produced by them again, which I can circulate. We're taking advice from James. We've looked at treasury management training and putting on something, we do that already for the Finance Committee, but there's no reason we can't extend that to invite all members. I've spoken to our external treasury advisers and so that could be available for all interested members, I just need to get a date in the diary for that. Risk management is another important area, very specifically for this committee. And last year, we lined up a provider to deliver some tailored training for Sheffield. So I'd propose that we do that again and so we can look at circulating some proposed content and some dates for that as well. And then there were just other resources around specifically for councillors. I've included in the report a link to the Local Government Association website, it's got a really good area just for members. There's loads of resources on there, including briefings, bite-sized e-learning courses, the stuff on audit committees as well. And there are also some relevant publications that I can send round, you may already be aware of that. And I'd also recommend that you have some sessions as a committee throughout the year with our external auditors without officers being present. And then that gives you the opportunity to explore any areas on their side outside of the committee. And then if there's anything else that you can think of, we can book and commission any other training if there are areas you particularly like to cover. For example, on the standard side of the committee, because I'm aware I'm just focusing on audit committee here, because that's my specialty. And then I'm liaising with colleagues in democratic services to feed into members about how this all feeds into member development generally. And if any of these kind of courses are relevant, to offer to all members. So the recommendations are that you re-endorse the position statement from SIPF as the model. And continue to adopt the principles as set out in that statement, the function of the committee. And then also just to discuss or approve recommended training and then consider any future retraining requirements that I might not have covered. Thank you.
Thank you for that Claire, I'll open up to questions.
It wasn't a question, this is really helpful, it was just that those internal training dates, as much notice as possible is really helpful. Probably a month's notice is required because I have to use public duty leave. And work patterns might mean that I won't be able to attend if I'm not able to book it off.
So I think probably the first one would be because the backstop date for the 22-23 accounts is looming fast, is December. So I think that definitely needs to be November at the latest for that one. I think we're due to come to committee in November for that one, so perhaps late October, early November for that one.
Thank you, any further questions? Councillor Bellbin?
I just wonder, especially when they are perhaps only being offered once, I think I've done that SIPF training on the knowledge and skills of the audit committee and I think they made it available. If you were booked onto it, even if you couldn't attend it at the time, and that means you've got access to the recording of it, which I think is really helpful when people are struggling for time and struggling to book things in.
Thank you, any further questions? No, I think what councillor Bellbin has actually raised, that's quite important because a lot of people can't actually use the times that they're given, but they can actually access webinars, which is quite useful, I think in any CPD or anything like that, it's much easier to access that, so if access can be made available to that rather than just fixed dates. One of the things that I'm quite keen on is having the external meetings with the auditors without offices being present. That I think would be a useful thing to timetable in for the future. I think that gives us the opportunity to ask questions that we might not want to ask in public or just for me, not look stupid in asking questions in public that I probably should know the answers to anyway, but that would be helpful if we could take that on board. If there's no further questions, then I have to read the recommendations which are that the Audit and Standards Committee is asked to endorse the position statement from SIPF on the role and function of audit committees in local government and continue to adopt the principles as set out in the statement. And two, the Audit and Standards Committee is asked to approve recommended training for members of the committee and consider the committee's future training requirements. Is everybody okay with that? Thank you so much, thank you Claire for presenting the report. We now move on to item eight, which is value for money 22-23. And which has been presented by Hayley from our extern audit, Ernst &amp; Young. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So yes, this is our interim report on the council's arrangements in relation to value for money for 22-23. If I was to summarise the report, I would say that as we've worked for our risk assessment, we only identified one risk of significant weakness and that was in relation to financial sustainability, which is one of the three criteria that we need to look at as your auditors. We've undertaken the required procedures and didn't identify any significant weaknesses in the council's arrangements that they have in place. We did raise one recommendation which is included in appendix B of the report. And that was just to highlight that whilst the council has set balanced budgets for both 22-23 and 23-24, as the reporting for month one has been reported, there have been some significant variances that have been identified as part of that. And therefore, you know, it was just, I guess, a question back and a challenge back to the organisation as to whether there's any that could have been identified as part of the budgeting process for the year. The council does have a good track record of, once those differences have been identified in month one, having worked through that to manage the budget going through, and management have included a response in appendix B in response to that. We will, we've also included our draft commentary in here as we get closer to closing out the 22-23 audit in its entirety as we work towards the backstop date in December. We will come back with our final reporting, but I'm not anticipating any more findings coming out of the value for money work. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Hayley, good question from councillor Clement Jones. Councillor Slater, councillor Clement Jones first.
Thank you, yeah, so if I can go to page 23, you mentioned it around the issues around setting the budget and overspend in the full year. I mean, this happens every year. And it's happened every year even in the years when I was helping to set the budget. It seems that this is business as usual, if you like, in Sheffield City Council. And I suppose my first question is, is this business as usual in most councils? But also, when would this, I mean, obviously you said that it is a significant weakness. How close are we to it being a significant weakness? And is the trend getting worse? Is it getting better? And as I say, it's not really given me much peace of mind that Sheffield City Council is learning or moving forward on this particular issue.
So maybe if I answer that and then potentially Claire wants to come in and obviously, I'll leave that down to her to suggest. I think you're right that there has been a trend of variance with being identified in that first month of the year. I think the reason why we're drawing it out in this reporting is that for 22-23 and 23-24, they have been probably more significant than what we've seen in the past. And I think that is probably due to, you know, certainly due to the pressures around adult social care and some of the specific challenges that you have in Sheffield. I don't think you, we see the same, I suppose we see the same size of challenge in terms of, you know, financial challenge of authorities similar to yourselves. I wouldn't necessarily say that that always comes through in a month one variance to budget. They're usually identified as larger challenges in the budget process that the authority then works through throughout the course of the year. Now, that's not to say that they aren't being identified by the organisation as challenges, they absolutely are. I would say it's probably down to how how you choose to set them out in your budget and then deal with them throughout the course of the year. But, you know, if I wasn't confident that you didn't have sufficient arrangements in place to understand that, know where your pressures were and deal with them throughout the year, then certainly I would have been bringing this as a significant weakness in your arrangements.
Thank you, yeah, I'm not sure that's given me much peace of mind at all really. I mean, and in terms of the use of reserves for that overspend, that seems to be business as usual as well. I mean, how close are we to, as I say, tipping over into a significant weakness in terms of that?
So, in terms of your use of reserves, from the evidence we've seen, they are planned uses of reserves. And the organisation tracks that for the course of the year and revises that. So even if it is a position that maybe wasn't in place as part of the budget process, there is evidence that that is being monitored and the reporting's flowing through appropriately throughout the course of the year. So again, you know, the fact that you have a budget gap or you have used your reserves, I guess we always come back to, is it planned? Do you understand where the challenges are coming from? And how are you monitoring them and taking action to either mitigate them or deal with them in the year that they're arising and future? So I guess the piece to the piece to think about when we're doing our reporting is we're looking at the arrangements that you have in place as opposed to whether you've got a large significant deficit that's potentially on the horizon. Clearly, if we felt that there wasn't sufficient understanding or work being undertaken to fix that or work towards resolving that gap, then we would be flagging that up as a significant weakness. Yes, yes.
Thank you, councillor Slater.
Hiya. I believe this is an interim report, when do we get the final one and will that include 23-24 as well as 22-23? Because I think it's said in here that it would. And then second one, what steps are being taken to make sure the 24-25 report will be available quicker? Because I'm beginning to worry, is it actually a risk in its own right that the report's taking so long to get to us?
So, the 23, sorry, don't start, 22-23 report, so you're right, we will bring that to you. You'll get a final report as we close out the 22-23 audit. And that will be hopefully by the November committee because there's the backstop date of the 13th of December that we're working to. And that will be, that'll be combined reporting. So usually, what you can expect from us is an audit results report and then we do what we call an auditor's annual report. And that usually sets out this VFM commentary and the arrangements in the detail that we've got here. For 22-23, you'll actually get a combined report that wraps all of that up together. We actually then are no longer your auditors for 23-24 and 24-25. So I think that's probably a question for KPMG unfortunately. Sorry to say, we aren't your auditors going forward.
Thank you, councillor Dwyer.
Thank you. On the question of financial sustainability, the new government's announced there'll be a one plus three arrangements and do you envision that having in that on improving financial sustainability of local government finances and specifically Sheffield's?
I don't know if that's a question for me or maybe a question for finance, but I think it's probably slightly too, well, I don't know if you would have as an organisation worked through that at the moment. I think that's quite a difficult question to answer actually, mainly because different organisations are going to be in different places financially, different levels of reserves, different financial pressures that apply to them. So whilst you, you know, frequently had pressures around adult social care and children's services, for example, others have challenges in slightly different areas and I guess it's whether that funding's going to bridge that gap. I guess as an organisation, and I can only speak up to sort of 22-23 in particular, you know, you have managed your reserves position reasonably well, you have had to utilise some of those reserves though over the last couple of years. And I think it's always important to note that in the environment we're operating in now, once those reserves are gone, it's very difficult to then build them back up again. But certainly, in my experience, the medium-term financial reporting that you've had in place has always recognised the risks of that and raised that as a concern.
Councillor Bellbin?
Thanks, yes, it was really kind of following on from councillor Clement Jones's questions around how well we are managing the sustainability issues. And I suppose I'm conscious that probably since you've done this report, you know, there are various steps in motion addressing how we address budgeting and so on. And although I appreciate you won't be looking at it, perhaps you could comment just on some of those different approaches that we're taking. So for example, I mean, just in here, you know, I think we've since made sure that the quarterly performance, the performance reports are being monitored by the Finance and Performance Committee more regularly and that's become an explicit part of that committee's function. And as well, we are in the process for this next year of moving to a priority-based budgeting approach, which is quite different from how we've done the budget in previous years. So I wondered if you had any comments on that as an approach. And also just, I suppose to mention my understanding, I think over the last couple of years, is that the business improvements that we've undertaken, I think have probably become more successful in terms of meeting their objectives and is that something that you recognise? But what is perhaps still problematic is the external demand on services rather than us failing to see through some of our business improvements. So I just wondered if you could comment on those, thank you.
Yeah, so I think with the first question you asked around the improvements in place, I mean, you're right, we we won't have spent too much time looking at those because they're falling into subsequent years. I guess though, my observation is, you know, if you're moving to a process where you are focusing more on the priorities of the organisation and the areas that are subject to more risk and there's only going to be benefit in that. With any change in process though, it's how you then embed that in the organisation and make sure that that's flowing through the culture of the organisation and they, you know, everybody understands that. In terms of the second point around sort of those business improvements, agreeing, obviously I think it was noted in here that, you know, the savings have increased as well. I think certainly, if I think back to the conversations, appreciate some of the finance team have changed in that process, but I think back to some of the conversations we had during the back end of 21-22 and into 22-23, what I would say is that the organisation in our view responded very well to some of those significant challenges that were coming through in month one. Certainly, the reporting into us as your auditors and the frequency of communication and the actions that the organisation was taking to mitigate against some of those. You know, they're all the things that we would absolutely expect and advise you as an organisation to have done. So certainly, I think that then helped you to then manage that position throughout that financial year and then coming into 23-24. But you're right, there's only going to be an element of that that you can control, certainly when there's, you know, an increased need for additional funding or you've done as much as you can in terms of transforming the services.
James?
Thank you, I just wanted to draw your attention and ask a little bit more about the other aspects of value for money. So, quite a lot in this report and what we've discussed so far is relating to cost reduction and financial sustainability. But of course, value for money is about achieving the best possible outcomes for the least possible cost. And that's reflected by the three Es you mentioned on page five of your report. You mentioned that half of the drawdowns on reserves, for example, relate to overspends in homelessness, I guess in that's things like temporary accommodation for crisis families and things of that nature. That suggests a couple of things, nothing specific because I've not gone through sort of prior year budgets line by line. But it suggests that perhaps previous cuts to preventative expenditure might be having an impact. And it also suggests that there might be some risks or failings of outcomes in some of those services that are designed to keep people off the streets. So I wonder, this report's about the arrangements in place for value for money, it doesn't assess value for money as such. However, I wonder if, to what extent we can really comment on the arrangements without making any comment in this report on any of the outcomes directly. And I wonder, is there any scope in your final report later this year for some of those crucial, particularly where it then circularly impacts back on financial sustainability, where there are issues with outcomes? Could you give us a bit more information on what, you know, you're saying this report that they're monitored, but you know, how have they deteriorated? How are they looking, some of those key outcomes? How does the failure to meet outcomes then impact back on financial sustainability? And yeah, really drawing out, I guess, some of the lessons with the council. Because I read a lot of this report about, you know, the arrangements within place and you list a lot of the things that we would expect to be in place and confirm that they are. But you don't get a lot from that on how well those arrangements are actually operating. So I don't know if you could speak to some of that and in particular whether there's more, you could draw out on some of those outcomes in your final report? If that's within scope, which it may not be.
Yeah, so some of that I think would be probably outside of scope just because of the way that I guess just based on the remit of the work that we perform. So, we do have the three headline criteria and below those, I think there's five sub-crit, I think it's five under each box, but there's sort of five sub-criteria that fit under them. The first part of our scope of work is to perform a risk assessment and there's various procedures we do to undertake that. It's only if we foresee a risk in significant weakness that we would then go into it and drill down slightly more. Clearly, what we do though is if there is anything that, you know, we don't necessarily assess that's going to fall into a significant weakness. The bar for that is relatively high. So we wouldn't necessarily drill down and do more work. So at the moment, I don't know if we would actually have done everything that you're suggesting because we're not necessarily, we're not necessarily looking at have you achieved value for money. It's back to have you got sufficient arrangements in place such that there isn't a significant weakness in relation to the ability for you to secure value for money. I can go away and I can think about it, but I'm not sure if we're going to have done that degree of work to report back on this.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think it's just when we see the big overspend in homelessness services and also there's another report that talks about issues in cost rises in children's services as well. So that's where it just flags, is there an outcomes issue? But yeah, I appreciate your point and that you'll take it away.
Thank you for that, any further questions before I ask mine? No, just picking up on what you've said James, I mean, I flagged up page 32. Just picking up on what you've said, James, I mean, I flagged up page 32 in particular where it says, again, around children's social care and adult social care. Despite this 15.5 million overspend was realised across the two directories, looking on to 24, 25, adults with learning difficulties are deemed to be the riskiest subset within challenges to the budget. And then it talks about furthermore, home-to-school transport costs are likely to be increasing because of lack of foster carers and things like that. The phrase that I'm really interested in, it says riskiest subset. When you say riskiest, does it, does it mean we're in triage? Or does it mean we're actually critical?
I mean, based on, based on where you were at the end of 22, 23 and sort of the last round of reports that we looked at, I wouldn't say you're in the critical stages. I think there are other authorities out there that are probably where their reserves are depleted far significantly than yourselves. I guess though, for an organisation of your size and spend of your size and some of the challenges, it wouldn't take a lot, you know, for you to move along, along the bar, so to speak. I do wonder, sorry, just, just coming back to councillor Brackley's previous point, if that's okay as well, is whether some of what is being requested and some of the questions you're asking may actually be within the remit of management rather than ourselves in terms of to bring you some additional information on those areas.
Thank you for that answer, because I think that's quite clear from, from, from my question anyway, that we can be quite close to it, although we're managing it really well at the present time. My other question was on page 34 and in particular around, yeah, where the council successfully bid on one sum funding which was used to create a pop-up space in the Fogg area of the city centre using old shipping containers. The project was delivered against the political backdrop of the council moving from a, from the council's strong leader to committee system. The particular area that I'm going to be asking about is the cabinet, the project was beset with difficulties and failed to reach expectations, closing in January 2023, although costs increased in relation to some of the issues faced. The loss experienced by the council was not significant. Can you just expand on that a little bit? What's the rationale behind coming to that conclusion?
So we didn't include it in the reporting, but the, the loss to the council was relatively small in comparison to the materiality and what we've been looking at here. So whilst we thought it was noteworthy to bring it to the committee's attention, just because it is a process that as an organisation you've worked through and it hasn't realised what you wanted it to. So there are lessons to be learnt behind that. We wouldn't have, we concluded it wasn't a significant weakness in its own right because the financial impact in relation to that was, was relatively small in comparison.
Thank you for that. Unless there's any further questions, we'll just go to the recommendation, which is to note the value for money interim report 22, 23. And it only remains for me to say thank you so much, Hayley, for being our external auditors and the work that you've been doing for Sheffield City Council. So thank you for that. Thank you. Right, switching myself off there. Moving on to item nine, which is audit recommendation tracker progress report, which Linda's bringing in autumn.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this report is the audit recommendation tracker. It provides you with an update on the progress that we've been making against the audit recommendations with an audit opinion for a report. It's either a no assurance report or a limited assurance and high organisational impact. I'll just highlight some key points here in this report. I just wanted to note though as well that the report was, you probably viewed it back in July, because this was coming in July. So some of the dates in there have exceeded as well. So the July and August dates will be picked up in our next tracker, because obviously this was, this was July when we produced this. But positive direction, we've made some improvements. And on page 54 of your pack, it highlights that 38 out of 54 recommendations have been actioned. So that's 70% of the recommendations we're tracking have been actioned. So that's the positive direction there. We've added in four new reports to this tracker and that's highlighted on page 54. But the most tracking seven reports within this, within this period. On page 54 also, it highlights us five critical recommendations that we were tracking. And if those five, three have been actioned satisfactorily, two are still ongoing. And those both relate to the debtor controls audit. And again, an update on those will be provided at the next tracker. But they are being monitored by, by the recommendation lead and the exec director for that portfolio as well. So that's being monitored. On page 55, we've outlined there, we took this report to our strategic enabling services DLT. We discussed there the critical recommendations and the red priority recommendations. And then we also forwarded this on to SLB for them to have a look at. From both points, so to support the individual recommendation lead, to see what support they need to make sure this, the recommendation's been actioned. But also to challenge, you know, any timelines, any delays or any resource that they need to make sure it's actioned. So we did that. In future, this report will go, before it comes to you, it's going to go to the newly formed corporate assurance board. So in future, that will, we're going to take it to offices. On page 56 is a table, so that outlines the seven reports that we've been tracking. And you'll see on there, it actually highlights four reports in grey. So they're four reports that actually for this period, we can actually take out of this report. All the recommendations have been actioned. So again, that's four out of the seven. And then on page 57 onwards of the pack, that outlines the update that we got from the recommendation lead. So the final column in the pack does highlights to you where their progress, if they're actioned or if it's ongoing and their comments that they made to us at that time period. So the recommendation is to note the content of the report and then to agree the removal. And there's four reports listed there. So that's removing the licensing report, suppliers additions and amendment to Integra, Holgate Meadows Community School and Freedom of Information Subject Access Requests Recovery Plan. So if there's any questions.
Thank you, Linda, councillor Dwight.
So you've already pre-answered my one where there was things that were outstanding, particularly around the adult social care one. And I was going, well, we passed that one yesterday. So things are ongoing, we'll see updated report. Because there's ones about the recruitment of 3.2 and I was wondering if there was an update, but then.
Yeah, I have got an update for that because I did ask for them verbally for an update. So I can give you 3.2, yeah, the recruitment. They did, they've gone through the recruitment process, it was unsuccessful. So what they're having to do is, the way the words are used, is look at alternative ways and the way forward for that. So they have, it's still outstanding, but to be fair, they did do the recruitment, but it was unsuccessful.
But my, my one, which wasn't just an update on how things were going, was on the Montgomery Children's Home, as it's got things outstanding. But it's quite, it's outstanding for quite a while before a few of us would have been on it. And it was just whether the report could be shared with new committee members, just if it remains on, just as a context of what those are tracking. I could make assumptions from the recommendations about what it was about, but I wouldn't want to, yeah.
No, like I say, so what you'll do is, you need the findings as well. So what I'll do is send out the full protocol. So what I'll do, for this three there, the tracking. So what I will do, I'll reissue those to all of you, so at least you've got those three that you, you can see the more details. But in future, you will get, all the members get, all the reports that are tracked in here.
Yeah, I've already had one since being on the committee and I was going, well, these must be previous ones.
Yeah, they are.
I've no idea what they're about. Yeah, no, thank you.
Councillor Slater.
Mine was on the heritage park bit, similar to what Matt was saying. Can we have an update on, because one of them says this will be set up, sorry, this is 1.6. Says it'll be set up at May half term. So was it? Can we have an update on that one? And then 2.1 also says it'll be started on September the 11th. Did it?
Yeah.
Yeah, just an update on those two.
Yeah, I did ask, I did ask, I emailed, like I say, I've emailed them for an update. I didn't get an update back from them. But what I did get an update was, to be fair, he didn't update me, but he just said, when I emailed, it was on September the 8th or whatever. So he said that the recruitment wasn't ready yet. So to be fair, he didn't have a further update for me on those. But yeah, I can keep chasing that. It looked, to be fair, it's ongoing. And I think that will be gone by, like I said, the next one approaching six months. So the fact that it's got the date for the recruitment for the 10th of September, that should have been, should have been actioned by now.
Yeah, mine's another one on the Montgomery Children's Home again, because myself and Simon have been on the committee long enough for, to have the history of this. And I just wondered about your level of confidence in the revised implementation timescales? Because they just seem to slip and slip and slip on this particular one.
Yeah, so what we're going to, like I say, so what I'm going to do now is what I've introduced from, from this month is I'm sending, because obviously this is going to go to the corporate assurance board. But I'm also going to do is send the recommendations that are outstanding. It's going this month to exec directors as well. So they're aware of it, they can track them as well. So like I say, they'll highlight any slippage and particularly the ones that are wrong for a while. I will be highlighting the same, well, this has been on for, you know, one year, two year. Yeah, so I'll highlight that. So that's a process that we've introduced, but only this month. So we haven't actually seen the benefits of that. It hasn't embedded in yet, but yeah, yeah, we'll take that on board. Yeah.
Councillor Clement Jones.
Yeah, I mean, it's really more of a, more of a comment than anything. Having seen these over the years, this started to look a lot more healthy than, than the others, where you would see revised timescale after revised timescale. And, you know, and see, see how things are slipping. So it's really good to see that you are actually managing to chip away at these. And we're obviously putting more things and stuff at the top to keep you busy. But yeah, I mean, to some degree, keep that up. We did have some discussion, I can't remember when it was, around actually getting the risk holders for some of these in. Because quite often we have questions about these that, that obviously finance, finance can't answer. I'm just wondering what happened to that, in terms of that? Because quite often, as I say, we'll, we'll have, we'll have questions, but then they'll say, what? It's, it's the management or whoever can, can answer that. And we don't really get the answers that we're asking for. Certainly when they're, when they're new on the, on the risk register, it might be helpful to ask them along to, to answer any questions that we might have. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I know Helen Moltino, who presents the, the risks, she took that on as an action and she's taken it to the corporate risk management group. So they are looking at that, like you say, probably bringing, you know, Helen will present her report, but then also bring, like I say, a risk lead, particularly it's a new risk to come in and answer questions as well. So yeah, we've taken that on board and that will start, yeah, will start happening.
Thank you. Could I just ask for a little bit more explanation on the first one, the debt controls in adults and health social care? Because it strikes me that it's potentially quite an important area, both because I imagine that the amounts involved could be very significant, I think. And also these are presumably some very vulnerable people. And then you get into, you know, many councils get into the situation where, you know, if the different provision of services aren't well joined up, you know, someone who is not well placed to sort of manage their finances, pay one debt and then they have the bailiffs coming for another debt and these sorts of situations. And it's really good that you've got this level of detail and you're, you're really helping the council pull this all together. But I just wondered if you could give us almost a brief summary of how worried this committee should be about this issue? And in summary, you've obviously made recommendations about several different systems, some of which are ongoing. Is this an area that is, in your view, in hand? Or is it something that we should be worried about?
Yeah, no, it's in that. And to be fair, this, because it's debtors' controls, it's what we call a main financial system. So we do debtors every year. And to be fair, they came forward, when we were scoping the audit for debtors, they actually came forward and said, we've got an issue, we've got concerns within adult social care. So they knew that it was going to be, there was going to be quite a few recommendations. They knew there was weaknesses that they needed to, to action. And this is just literally, like I say, it's, it's given them a bit more to work to now. So like I said, the full report, when I send that through to you, you'll see the findings and the recommendations. And like I say, they are, there's quite a lot there, but they've started to work through quite a few. You can see quite a few already green. So yeah, they are progressing it. We've just started to do, because obviously this, this update is a verbal, well, a written update from them, but we haven't looked at the evidence to support it. And we're just launching this week, doing a follow-up on this audit as well. So that is where we ask for the evidence to support this. So, so yeah, we should be able to, to see significant improvements in here. But to be fair, they knew there was weaknesses, which is why we put it forward. So yeah, I can give you an update after we've done the follow-up as well. So the next tracker, I can give you, yeah, see what evidence we've seen as well to support it.
Thank you, Linda. I think most of the questions and observations have been addressed so far. So I haven't got anything else apart from, unless anybody else has got anything further, we'll just go towards the recommendation, which is that the Audit and Standards Committee notes the content of the report, that the Audit and Standards Committee agrees to the removal of the following reports from the tracker, which is licensing, sports grounds and enforcement, supplier addition and amendment on Integra, Holgate Meadows Community School and Freedom of Information Subject Access Request Recovery Plan. Is everybody fine with that? Thank you. And thank you for the report, Linda. Thank you. Right, we move on to item number 10, which is interim standards complaint update report, which has been presented by David.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is the six monthly update in relation to complaints that have been issued through the standards regime. That's one that is dealt through the monitoring officer protocol in the constitution and alleges a breach of the code of conduct that is also in the constitution. Those complaints are all considered in line with the requirements of the Localism Act 2011 and the relevant law. It's always a difficult report to bring because those are confidential matters. And therefore what we're bringing is, rather than details of the actual standards complaints themselves, a summary of the number of them. I think we've recognised that this report could probably have more information in it, particularly in relation to previous years and trends, but also by way of more information without breaching that confidentiality of why matters are dealt with in the particular way that they are in a summarised form. So I've started discussing that. And hopefully by the end of the year, report that we bring, we will be able to bring much more detail for that so that it is more informative for this committee. Just in relation to numbers themselves, they remain relatively low. I maintain that they're low, particularly when you look at the number of ones that actually go through and are considered as being standards matters. What we have noticed is a significant increase in ones that are rejected as actually not raising standards issues. And I think that's probably made me realise we, we might need some additional guidance on the website for those who put in standards complaints to make it clear what the regime covers, but particularly what it doesn't cover. Just by way of numbers, you'll see that there's 17 come through in this, sorry, 16 come through in this quarter. By way of comparison, in 22, sorry, in 23, there were a total of 19 complaints in the full year. 10 and nine split over the two halves. 22, it was 13, which is split eight and five. 21, we was the, we had a full year report rather than half year and that's 13. So as I say, these, these are increased numbers, but actually what is increasing is rejected ones. So I think the actual ones that are dealt with as standards complaints are, is actually reducing. Some of the analysis that we've seen of trends of those that are rejected, the major ones are, seem to be the highest trend is no response from councillors to constituents or a feeling that councillors haven't responded effectively. And there was aren't matters that fall within the standards regime. So that's, that's the highest one. So I think, as I say, some guidance will be useful. Just in my final comments, I just want to thank those that are involved in the regime, the independent persons who are named to provide significant assistance to myself and the deputy monitoring officers. Whenever we reject one, we always speak to an independent person first to make sure that we're, they agree with our assessment. And also to Sarah Hiding in Democratic Services, who does the administration for these. And I want to thank those for their ongoing assistance.
Thank you, David. Any questions? Councillor Slater and then councillor Bellman.
Oh yeah, you touched on it briefly, but is there a sort of opportunity here for sort of learning off the back of this in terms of what should be done, shouldn't be done, that side of things? Is that something you include in it? Is that something you include in it?
Yes, because I think that, that there's, there's an issue here of what goes through and what's confidential, but then the, the lessons that can be learnt, and, and actually some of those lessons around the non-response I've taken up by the whips, so this is a trend that I've noticed, and so, but as I say, I think the guidance on the website to those putting in complaints will help with that as well.
Thanks. David, I know you and I have had a bit of a conversation this year around the whole issue of when is a councillor acting as a councillor, and, which is maybe one of the reasons why complaints are rejected, because the councillor wasn't acting as a councillor. But I notice that's not one of the reasons why no action is taken, so I'm not entirely clear now if, when, if someone makes a complaint and your judgement is that they weren't acting as a councillor, whether they're included in this, but rejected, or if they don't even make it onto this report, if you see what I mean?
They are included in the rejected, but I think what we can do is give further detail about the reasons for rejection in future reports. So I think that, that's one of the things I've started to discuss about, how do we, how do we record the reason for rejection so that that, that becomes clear?
Councillor Dwight. Thanks. It was whether in other committees, we'll be, as I say, we look at how we compare to other core cities or other similar local authorities. And I was just wondering whether you know of any, like, how we compare to other local authorities of similar size?
I haven't done. What I will say is, that's going to be a difficult comparison, because they will have similarly anonymised data. And as a city, we have relatively few parish or town councils compared to other cities, and the regime also covers parish and town councils as well. And it can be an experience in some areas that they are a significant generator of standards complaints. So you're, you're, you're comparing apples and pears, as it were, in a way. But we can have a look to see if we can find some information about that, particularly for the end of year report.
Third question, councillor Clement Johnson.
I suppose the question is, is, is there, is there a split between city councillors and parish councillors within this? I mean, I know there used to be a significant number of parish councillors in, in previous reports. How's that looking, as it were? Is it, is it us or is it them?
It's you. I haven't included twenty twenty, because there was a significant number, which was parish council then. But, but actually, sorry, Chair, but actually, that's one of the things that we will include in the future, whether it's who, who's put the, the complaints in, who they're against, whether they're parish councillors, city councillors or co-opted members. That's the kind of data and information that we can put in, as long as it doesn't breach that confidentiality. You have to be careful where there's low numbers, but we will look to make sure we record that so that we can try and give that information.
Thank you. I think there's three points that have actually coming out of here, aren't there, really, that probably need to be addressed? One is, you've already talked about what is covered and what, what isn't covered. If that is actually clarified somewhere, that'd be quite helpful. And the other one, which is quite important as well, is when, I think councillor Belbin raised it, and I think we've all got this issue, when is a councillor acting as a councillor and not acting as a councillor? Because a lot of complaints that you see coming in, or from anybody, whether it's members or from the general public, seems to not, there doesn't seem to be a definitive line or a definition. So it's something that we probably need to, to, to be addressing as well. And the third point, which I've got, jot it down here, is what councillor Dwight said, comparisons with other authorities. I know it's not easy, it's going to be very difficult, because as we discussed previously, a lot of these issues are raised on a subject, by subject basis, and sometimes you get a, a peak, because we're, we're running through some subject that's very dear to people's hearts. So if you just comment on those three, and then I'll, I'll come to the record.
Yes, well, I, I think the first and third, I've probably, hope I've covered and last is anything else. I think the, the second one is probably the question that vexes or gives us the greatest amount of consideration as monitoring officer and deputy monitoring officer, because it, it's something that's within the Localism Act, that the regime only applies when somebody's acting in that capacity, but it's not defined in the act. And there is only one case that has some reference to it, and tells, tells you a case where it wasn't, but doesn't tell you where it is. So there, it's a case-by-case basis, and there are times when it's obvious, when, you know, if you're here in a meeting, you're acting in your capacity as a councillor. You know, if you happen to be in the supermarket shopping and you speak to somebody and they're not happy, you're not acting in the role of a councillor. There, there's a very, the thin line is where things, particularly on social media, where people are saying, or in a public sphere, but not necessarily acting in the capacity of councillor, they're the ones that we have to look at the circumstances of each individual case and make a decision on those. A, a number of rejections were, that we did, were in relation to campaigning during the elections, which is clear that during campaigning, the members aren't acting in the capacity of a councillor.
Well, thank you for that, David. I, I think, I think you, you hit the nail on the head there by saying, there's a fine line here, and it's a very difficult one. It's, it's in the eye of the person who's listening to it, really, isn't it? That, what they consider to be relevant and not relevant. But I think one thing that comes out of it is that you're pretty much acting as a councillor wherever you are, more or less. Councillor Belbin.
Yeah, just to add, I think I did have a very helpful conversation with David about this, as I say, quite recently, and it might be useful if that was kind of written up and shared with everybody on the committee and shared around people on the group. In fact, I think the upshot of that is that we are quite rarely acting purely as councillors, if you like, in terms of the case law and things like that. It's pretty much when we're sat in these rooms and in committee meetings, so there are some, more, less, less clear situations, but it'd be helpful to share that information, I think.
That, that would be extremely helpful, because a lot of the angst that we get from members of the public and even our own colleagues is because the understanding is not, is not as clear. But the fact is, as you've just said there, David, it, it's not that clear-cut, and it's got to be a subject-by-subject basis, and, and, and that's, that's how it's got to be. But somehow we need to get that, that message across. So unless there's any further questions, we'll move on to the, sorry, yes, carry on.
It is, it is a point that I've actually expanded on a little bit in the induction training for new members, so it's something that I've, I've taken on board. I, I think the point I would make is that even though the legislation recognises there's times when you're acting in the capacity of councillor, councillors are elected to that post, that, that office, and they are always a councillor, and they're never not a holder of that office, even if they're not always acting in that capacity, and it's a, it's a difficult distinction. The, the Nolan principles always apply to the holders of public office, and they are expected to uphold the Nolan principles at all time, whether or not they might actually be then enforced via the standards regime. And, you know, I think that, that position probably needs to be made clear as well. That's, that applies to elected officers and, sorry, elected councillors and officers as well.
Thank you for that, David. I mean, I'm glad you mentioned the Nolan principles. I mean, that's, that's what I was alluding to, really, when I was saying that you're almost acting as a councillor all the time, because that is what you, what you are. I mean, it's very difficult to say in a conversation, in social conversation, when people direct you towards a political issue, and you can't, you can't just say, I'm now acting not as a councillor, and it's without prejudice from here onwards. It's, it sort of kills the conversation a little bit, I think, if you become legalised like that. Anyway, unless there's any further questions, we'll move on to the recommendations, and the one I want to start with is point three. I'm going wrong, the wrong way around, thanking those that have supported the monitoring officer in progressing these matters. Having been involved with quite a few of them now, I, I realise how much time and effort the independent people and the officers put into every single issue that comes in front of us. And sometimes the general public and, and even our own members don't see the work that's actually gone on in the background. There is a considerable amount of work that goes on, you just don't get, you don't get a, a complaint and just write it off straight away. There is a lot of work that is done behind the scenes, so I thought it was important to get that message across, now, now that I've seen it firsthand as well. And sometimes it can take quite some time to actually get to a, a conclusion, and not, not all parties are ever happy with it. So I can honestly say that it's a very robust, robust and transparent process that we actually go through. So thank you for those people who give up their time, especially the independent members and officers, who I know are put in some very awkward positions when they're actually dealing with these things. So thank you for that. So that, I've done number three there. We know there are, and number one is comment, the Audit and Standards Committee are recommended to comment on the interim standards complaints update, note the report, and I've already done number three. If everybody's happy with that, then thank you. Thank you, David. Now moving on to item number eleven, which is the work programme, Philip.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the draft work programme for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five is, it's in the agenda packs from page eighty-five onwards. There's been a bit of movement around reports, but I've worked with officers to try and get that in a sort of an agreeable format. So the recommendation is to approve the work programme, so if you could have a look and note the programme ahead, please.
Councillor Slater.
It's just a question regarding the community schools update. That just said it's been removed completely.
Why is that? David?
That's been on the work programme for over two years, from before I was the, the monitoring officer and before the chair, who was the chair. I've gone back through, it's been deferred a number of times, and I've got, oh well, actually Philippa did the work for me. We've been back through the, the agendas and minutes. It, it was over two years ago. The minutes don't record why it was actually put on the work programme. What we have actually been able to do, though, is I think, especially as Linda was aware, was remembered it. It relates to one of the matters that was highlighted in the, the audit tracker, that you've actually had updates via the audit tracker and have just taken off the audit tracker this, at this meeting. So I think it's now, now don't need a report on it, so that's why it's recommended to remove it.
Chair, not in relation to the work programme, but in relation to the meeting that was cancelled on the twenty-fifth of July? I just wonder whether it might be appropriate to mention in the minutes of this meeting that we didn't hold the meeting in July? Otherwise, there's no record of it.
Yes, thank you for raising that, Alison. I think we really need to mention that we didn't convene on it. We did convene, but we didn't go ahead with the meeting on the twenty-fifth of July. So there is some record of the fact that lots of people turned up, but we didn't do it. So if we can mention that in the minutes or whatever. Right, is there any further issues around the work programme? No, it's only one from me, and I know it's been dealt with at the relevant committee levels anyway. It's, some members have raised the issue around Fargate, the Fargate scheme, and whether that can be something that can be timetabled in the future.
The, the Fargate scheme, as in?
As in the one that's happening now.
And what do we want?
The concerns were, I mean, there was a lot of press coverage around it, about how it was getting, the budgets were exceeded and all the rest of it, and it was mentioned to me whether that's something that audit might need to pick up at some stage, or do we not need to pick it up? I'm only asking the question here.
I'm not sure whether it's a matter that would fall within audit. I think it's probably a matter that would fall within Finance and Form, the Finance and Performance Committee.
That's fine, fine. I've asked the question and I've got the answer. So thank you for that. All that remains now is the dates and times of the future meeting. The next meeting will be held on the seventeenth of October twenty twenty-four, and it will be chaired, chaired by councillor Belbin. Thank you. Thank you for your attendance.